Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held May 17, 2016. I have a notice to read. Council will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, June 7, 2016, to reconsider the rezoning of lands located at 26 Hudson Bay Avenue. To start this meeting, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda. It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of May 17, 2016, with the addition of item 6 to D, June 15, Elder Abuse Awareness Day. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Petitions and delegations. Today, we have Walter Quamar from North American Land Holdings. Walter, welcome, and please have a seat.
Thank you.
And the mic is turned on, and we are streaming.
All right. Good afternoon, council. I purchased a property in the tax sale as of last September, I believe, and the property was, according to your GIS system, it was showing the property on the south side of Kirkland Lake, but as we found out later, this is incorrect. The property is actually under the lake, and that property that was shown on the maps and all the marketing material was, in fact, Kirkland Lake Gold's property. And I incorrectly purchased this property, thinking that it was on the water and not under the water, and I'm asking for any consideration you guys might have. I'm open to exchange for maybe a city-owned property, a surplus property, really anything, any consideration you guys could provide would be open.
Okay. Councillor Kylie, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I'm curious, was the title searched on the property prior to making the offer to purchase?
Title was searched. Title just primarily shows whether or not there's any liens or not, which there weren't, but it didn't show which property it was. Later, at a later date, I got the map. Actually, somebody was wanting to harvest the timber, Mr. Sebastian Maureen, and he brought that to my attention. He's like, "That property shows up under Kirkland Lake Gold's name." And then I investigated further, and that is, in fact, the case. The city GIS system shows the property I purchased as being Crown land, and which, in fact, it wasn't.
Why wouldn't the lawyer have picked up on that right at the outset?
I do not know.
Was it, did you use local?
I did use a lawyer up in Timmins.
Okay.
And I believe you guys do have copies of the maps and the Service Ontario Property Index map as well.
Councillor Roman.
Have we confirmed whether or not it was advertised in error? Was there an error?
Well, I don't want to speak for the tax side of it, but I do believe that the town follows all the Municipal Act of Ontario. Whenever a surplus property comes available, the property was never in the town's name, but that question could be better answered by either Ryan or Jen. So, to councillor Roman's question. No, Ryan, please come up and put the mic on beside you, please, and you can maybe walk us through a little bit of the background and the role that the town played.
Okay, so, we advertise these properties for sale. We do go a little bit above and beyond, and we supply any pictures that we might have or maps, but those, that's not something that we have to do, that's not legislated in the Act to do, so that's kind of above and beyond. When we do, though, we do have a disclaimer on our photos to say that, and I'll read exactly what it says to you. It says, "Photos and maps are for information purposes only and are not to be considered legal representation of the property. Legal survey of the property is a sole responsibility of the potential purchaser." So, although the picture that was up, we have now found out, is incorrect when he brought in the pin map, ultimately, it's the potential purchaser's responsibility to do those background checks prior to putting in a bid for any of these properties.
And can I ask what the purchase price was?
I have it. $5,127 plus HST. That's correct. Yes.
Ryan, I do have a question for you. Prior to Mr. Quamar taking ownership of this property, did you have any conversation with this gentleman?
Yeah, we had some discussions prior to. We, I explained kind of the same thing I do with everyone, you know, to make sure that you go and do your background checks, do any title searches on these properties. Again, these are all things that, probably more than what we have to do, but I like to put all that kind of information upfront for people, especially people who aren't familiar with the tax sale process. It's a pretty unique process to buying property. And again, ultimately, at the end of the day, and it does make reference in our ad, that we make no representation regarding title or any matters relating to the land to be sold. Responsibility for ascertain these matters rests with the potential purchaser. So, that's why I always try to explain to people upfront, make sure that you do any kind of background checks to find out before you give us money, because unlike a normal sale, once you've paid for these tax sale properties, once you're the highest tender and you've given the money, there's no going back. You will get a lawyer after the fact, but you, the sale's kind of already been done, the money has already been given to the municipality, and it can't be returned after the fact. If I may, if I may add, the disclaimer he did mention, not that I'm relying on that, was not in, on these images, it wasn't there. But that aside, the full legal description in the ad doesn't mention, well, on the pin, it's, the full legal description includes comprising land under the waters of Kirkland Lake. However, the advertisement didn't even have the full legal description. I'm not saying he did his job wrong or anything, no. It's a simple error, like the maps just don't. I've been doing tax sales since 2007, since I was 18, and this is the first time anybody has ever come up with a situation like this. I even talked to some of the other municipalities I deal with, they were like shocked at how this slipped through, but it did, you know.
Any other questions from council? Okay, well, what the process now is, we'll take this under consideration, and staff will be contacting you as to what the decision of this council was. I'm just wondering, as you buy tax sales, do you do due diligence on them, but in this case, you didn't?
I did do due diligence. I did the title search, and I did walk the property, which I thought was the property, which is actually Kirkland Lake Gold's. I've secondarily trespassing annoyingly, but that's another story. And the other thing I was saying, I wanted to add, I am open to exchange for a surplus property. I'm looking to, really, whatever we can do, because this is unfortunate, I don't want to, it's an unfortunate mistake, really.
Yeah, it is. But I guess there's also a lesson to learn on this, isn't it? When you're buying properties in different parts of the country, or different countries, it's extremely important to understand what the Ontario tax sale process is, and that due diligence is done prior to writing the check.
But then again, if somebody's telling you this is the property, and you're going to believe that, your municipal map is showing that, obviously, the pin map did show differently, but if all the signs point to one thing, what can you do?
Yep. Okay, well, we thank you for coming. Staff will be getting back to you. We have all the information with regards to your matter.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Walter, you're certainly welcome to stay, but please don't feel obligated that you have to stay. Especially if you're a Raptors fan. Thank you. Okay, we have the acceptance of the minutes and recommendations. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker. The council approves the minutes of the following meetings. The meeting to open tenders for hired help, for hired equipment rental, held April 19, 2016. The regular meeting of council held May 3, 2016. The meeting to open proposals for complex concession held May the 5, 2016. And the meeting to open tax sale tenders held May the 11, 2016. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, you're going to speak on?
The Association and Municipalities of Ontario Conference will be held this year in Windsor from August 14 to 17, and we have received documentation about the conference and the program they have put out already. So, at this point in time, we don't have any particular needs to meet with any ministers at the conference, but as we always do, we put it out there to council to see if there's anybody who feels the need to attend this conference this year.
Council? Just for that, we have the Phenom Conference, and I will be meeting with Minister Baines and Sudbury on the 25th. Okay, thank you.
The next item is also from the Association and Municipalities of Ontario, and it's regarding the Fort McMurray Disaster Fund. They are challenging other communities to make a donation to the Red Cross and which the government is going to be matching. And I would like to suggest, perhaps, that the Town of Kirkland Lake donate $1,000 to be matched. We have 444 municipalities in Ontario, and if everybody does that and it's matched, it would be $888,000 toward the cause, so just a suggestion.
Councillor Kylie.
Yes, Nancy. Sorry. Tamiskamang Municipal Association has also organized a fundraiser, as you're aware of. There are deposit containers downstairs and all the municipal offices at the different banks. As a member of TMA, I'd like to see us support that as well. This is, it's actually a duplication of what we're looking at here now, so would council have any objection to splitting, if we were going to put out $1,000, $500 to TMA and $500 to AML? It's all going to end up with the Red Cross. But I think we should support TMA. We went through fire disaster a few years ago, and the local community support was excellent, and I'd like to continue those relationships.
You know, the vehicle we use to get them the money, I don't think, is important, because I believe that the feds are matching.
Feds are matching.
Dollar for dollar.
So, it doesn't matter, you know, where we put the money, but you're right, we did have a lot of community support from our outlying communities and that, and we could put our entire thousand into that one, as long as the right people get the money, and it's matched, so.
It's all going to end up going through the...
The Red Cross?
Red Cross, sorry.
Yeah, that's, I certainly have no objection to that. Council? Okay. I have a, it was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves a $500 donation to AML's Fort McMurray Disaster Fund, as well as a $500 donation to the Tamiskamang Municipal Association's Fort McMurray Disaster Fund. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joanne, you're going to speak on 2016 summer meeting schedule.
During the summer months of July and August, we generally only have one meeting a month, or that we schedule only one meeting a month. We are, we can call other special meetings if needed, whatever goes on in the town that we need to have meetings for. But we like to regularly schedule July 19 and August 16 for this year's meetings for the summer.
Okay, it was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that council approves the following summer schedule for council meeting dates. June 19, 2016, and August 16, 2016. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, the next one is a request from Victim Services of Tamiskamang District. This is a group that was previously known as Vickers, so they do work with the police when it comes to victims of survivors of crime, and they are asking us to declare a week, just to bring awareness to their cause.
It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council declare May the 29 to June the 4, 2016, as Victims and Survivors of Crime Awareness Week in and for the Town of Kirkland Lake. All in favor? Thank you.
The next one is, this is from the Minister Responsible for Seniors Affairs. June is, what the province always appoints, as Seniors Month in Ontario, and this is their 32nd anniversary, so they're asking us to also declare it a month in Kirkland Lake.
It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that council declares June 2016 as Seniors Month in and for the Town of Kirkland Lake. All in favor? Thank you.
And the next one is from Tamiskamang Elder Abuse Task Force, and they're asking us to declare June 15 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. They're asking us to do this a little bit early, because on June 1, they do have their Spring Fling that they hold at the Royal Canadian Legion, and this is where they bring people from different organizations together and showcase what they have to offer. So, they're asking us to do that, and, yeah, and it's in Tony's office, so you can write it out.
I do have the, it's just in my office, because I was going to deliver it tomorrow, I'm sorry.
Do you want, I think it's, you have it on the back of yours, do you? No?
Maybe I do.
Tom's got it there.
Tom's got it.
You don't have to.
I'll read that. This is a proclamation for World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Whereas in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaimed the day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. Therefore, I, Tony Antoniazzi, Mayor of Kirkland Lake, do proclaim June 15, 2016, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day here in Kirkland Lake. All in favor? Thank you. Director of Economic Development, is that where we are?
Nope.
Oh, okay, the Minister, Community Services, Minister Inspection of the Kirkland Lake Daycare. I see we have some visitors.
I'll ask Candace to join me.
And welcome, Candace.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so again, we always have our annual inspections each year from the Ministry of Education. This year was a little bit different, because it was the first year that we had to run by the new act, which is the Child Care and Early Years Act, which they wrought forth in August of 2015, and then as of January this year, we had to have it in full force, and it replaced the old Day Nurseries Act, which was in place for many, many years. So, there was a little bit of changes of the things that they run by for each center, and again, this year, on May 3, we had Mark Tardif, a Program Advisor from Ministry of Education, complete, and we again had 100% compliance for this year's inspection, which was, he was pretty pleased with what he saw, again, because usually, we had Lily Boucher from the Ministry of Education, but they just did a little bit of a change around, and so we've been doing good with the new act, and it's, we just wanted to share that news with you guys, that we received 100% compliance one year again.
It's good to get good news sometimes, and certainly, it's a direct reflection on Bonnie and her crew, and you and your staff working at the daycare, and I think it's a reflection and a confidence builder for parents who drop their children off at our daycare. So, certainly, we want to congratulate you and your staff for 100% compliance. It's not easy to get 100% compliance with the ministry, and we certainly commend you for that.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for bearing the good news, especially on a day when most people got their assessments. And Bonnie, you're going to speak on the concessionaire bid?
Yes, we had put out for tender the concessions at the complex at Baird Park and at Civic Service Stadium. We had two bids, and both bids only bid on the concession at the complex for now, so we will have to go out again. I think once Civic is built and people can see what they're bidding on, it will be easier, but for now, we did receive the two bids, and this is a three-year term, and that will go from June 1 of this year, for three years. So, we are recommending that Paula James receive the bid. She did have the highest possible score. We had a decision matrix, that we looked at all kinds of things, what they're able to offer to the public, what their prices are, what the financial return on investment is to the community. The lady who bid has worked for the Strons for the past number of years, so she has good experience in that area, so we are recommending that we award it to Paula James.
Okay, and any questions from council? That will come back in a bylaw. Thank you, Bonnie. Now, the Director of Economic Development, Wilfred, you're going to come up and speak to the Kirkland Lake Multicultural Group Service Agreement.
As the mayor pointed out, it regards to Kirkland Lake Multicultural Group. Before I begin, I would like to point out that two representatives are in the audience, Isabelle and Renee, and I'm sure they're anxious to answer any questions you may have. The multicultural group has been in existence for a while. They have been functioning as an informal organization. They recently achieved their non-for-profit status, and as part of that, they're formalizing some of the services and work that they have been doing on a friendly basis. It comes at a good time, because we are seeing more investment in the community from people that have come within Canada, from outside of Canada. And in many cases, they feel much more comfortable dealing with people that have encountered a similar experience. The multicultural group is able to provide that kind of advice, that kind of guidance in a very informal, in a very friendly manner. That has come to my attention a number of times, because I've had people from the business community pointing out that they've gotten this kind of information or that kind of information, and it's working out well. With the achievement of a formal status, the group is also looking for a place to base their operations out of. Now, it's not a 24-hour operation, not even an eight-hour operation during the day, is when and as they can provide it. Excuse me. They have looked at a number of different areas in the municipality. One of them was Heritage North. We discussed that, what the implications would be, what the operating impact would be for the facility itself. They are very accommodating, they would be using the facilities as needed, they would, they're asking for an office in the office area, and they would be providing the services when a client does call. Any kind of activities that they do, it is with the recognition that the revenue-generating activities of the facility take precedence. That is something they're comfortable with, and given their reputation in the community is something I'm comfortable with, working with them. I am proposing a six-month period where we can see whether or not this works out. I am proposing that on an exchange for services, for a place, that they will be providing some of the services during some of the research projects that are coming up this summer. Far Northeast Training Board has a project they're interviewing and working with immigrant investors throughout the north, as well as we are collecting some information for updating the town's website. So, the proposal to council is to approve of a six-month agreement in Sherry. Anything you'd like to add?
Councillor Morgan.
Yeah, I think this is really exciting. As most of us know, Kirkland Lake used to be an incredible place for all the various cultures, and they all had their own cultural activities, buildings, you know, entities, and of course, over time, you know, those become hard to continue on with, and a lot of them fell by the wayside. And now that we have this new multicultural organization coming up, it seems that they're filling a, you know, a really nice void that was left behind by these other groups, so. I mean, Kirkland Lake has a very proud heritage of multiculturalism, and it's great that this can continue on, and I'm glad that the town can support it, so thanks, Wilfred.
Councillor Barker.
Just want to echo what councillor Morgan had stated. Great investment for the town, and it offers some community services that are definitely needed at this point in time in our community, and will always be needed, so very, very proud of this day and what you're bringing forward, and fully support it. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add, I had the pleasure, not that long ago, of attending the multicultural dinner. There was upwards of 100 people there, people from all over the world. It was quite exciting, and I want to thank you as the mayor for even forming this group, because it gives people from different cultures an opportunity to share their experiences and create new friendships, especially for the children. And Heritage North is a perfect spot for it, because really, that's why we, part of the reason we have Heritage North, to work with community groups, and we certainly welcome you there, and thank you for the service that you're doing to our community. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to proceed with a six-month trial arrangement with the Kirkland Lake Multicultural Group for the use of space at Heritage North. All in favor? Thank you. Director of Physical Services. First, the announcement that our official plan is now in effect.
I'm pleased to announce that our official plan is now in effect. Just go through some background on it. It was originally adopted by council on March 3, 2015. There were some discussions with Mr. Dudgeon around a policy to allow development in rural areas that didn't front on a roadway. We did our work on that and did not agree with that, and so did council. So, the Municipal Affairs and Housing recommended some minor changes through the process, which were adopted and put into the official plan. Mr. Dudgeon decided to appeal our official plan, because he didn't have the policies in there that would allow that development on... in there that would allow that development on rural properties within the township. At that point, we, we tried to work with Mr. Dudgeon to see what we could do. It was unsuccessful. Mr. Dudgeon also talked to the Skidoo Club about supporting his position, or he would close snowmobile trails, which he proceeded to do, on, on their route, within their routes. And just prior to the appeal, although trying to contact him about his appeal, five days before, he did withdraw his appeal after the town had retained the, the planning lawyer, looking at legal costs, well, around six thousand, and staff time, about two, about eight thousand worth of time preparing for this. But as a result of his withdrawal of the, his appeal, our official plan was adopted. There's no further appeals on it, and it was effective as of May fourth, I believe. So that, that's going forward. The online documents will be updated to reflect the new official plan, so our dealings with, for planning issues will need to follow the, the new, all the policies within the new official plan. We've also received notice that we will receive our municipal empowerment to make decisions on the official plan, amendments and plans of subdivision, and we'll have that authority as of July first, which will speed up a lot of processes, or applications that have been coming in, so that, that's coming along with it. Although delayed in having this till the, the appeal was settled, although it was withdrawn. We'll continue work with the Snowmobile Club, as Mr. Dudgeon does continue to have an effect on their trail system as a result of his not being able to have the policies he wanted. So at this point, it's withdrawn, and we now have our official plan adopted. So I would like to thank all the Planning Department, Building Department, over the years, working on this, a lot of hours put into it, a lot of consultation, dealing with ministries, two babies for Ashley from the start of this. And, and we're, now we've done our official plan in-house, and, and council's adopted it, and so has Municipal Affairs and Housing. So again, I appreciate the staff, Ashley, Mike, Jenna, receptionist at the Planning Department. It was a real team effort to get it going.
Yeah, sure. You know, a document of this size certainly requires a tremendous team effort, and I guess some engagement with community stakeholders as well. But it's nice to see that it's, it's all approved now, and we can move forward with it. Thank you, Mark, for that information.
And the next thing that will come will be the, the new zoning bylaw to go with that, and that we'll be working on now. Next item is the, looking at awarding the tender for the Grayden Utility Reconstruction for the Folger Easement, King Comfort, Poplar Drainage Area D2 project that was put out. It's my recommendation that we award the contract to Pedersen Construction at the value of their tender, two million, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, seventy cents, plus HST. They, they were not the lowest tender. They were approximately a hundred and twenty thousand more than the lowest, which was the MX Constructors. It is within our funded allotment and capital budget for the project. And so identity, we intend to review of everything. We reviewed the documents. So we look at certain criteria within there. On tender review, the firm's previous experience and knowledge to manage projects of similar size and assignment and scope, the firm's knowledge familiarity with and or previous work with the town of Kirkland Lake, qualifications and relevant experience of the team, personnel, and, and time assigned to the team, references and background search, and then, as well as the fee structure. Throughout that review, Pedersen did score higher as the preferred contractor. As far as the, the price differential is a hundred and twenty thousand. We do do pre-construction estimates on all our jobs. We do, and we do rock probing, and we are very familiar with this type of reconstruction job, and knowing what these, these amounts and dollars will come in at to be successful. And although they were, they were lower, don't also believe it's feasible for them to successfully complete this project under those dollars from the type of work that we see happening in this area, which is one of the criterias on the pricing. The, the amount they're under, the contingency amount wouldn't cover what we believe would be the proper value of this contract. So we're, and as well, the, the references were, weren't as, as good as Pedersen's.
Counselor Morgan?
Mark, I mean, I'm fully prepared to support your, your suggestion here. Just to clarify though, all of the bidders on these jobs know that there's a matrix, right? And that this, this is the way that we decide these projects?
This is a, a tender, right?
Right.
So it's really not a decision matrix, it's a tender review process.
Okay.
So it, it's not listed there, but all the qualifying information is within each tender requirement.
Okay, so they know what, what's expected of them in the tender documents, right?
Down to the last item, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Roman?
I'd certainly be willing to support this as, as well. I know we've been stung in the past. The, the lowest tender isn't always necessarily the best tender. My concern would be with the funding agency, because at times, they, they insist upon the lowest tender. Is this something that's been broached with them? Like, are they comfortable with, with us taking the next to lowest tender?
So I haven't, I haven't talked to the funders yet, although we, it falls within the funded, funded amount. On, on last year's job, we had approached them with a similar issue. As long as everything falls within the funded amount, and we're not changing our project to go any higher, they didn't have any concerns.
Counselor Kylie?
Yes, Mark, I support what you're saying. A little bit difficult accepting the fact that it's but a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference. You're indicating that they wouldn't be able to complete the job satisfactorily within that price range. I mean, how, what's the total amount of the contract approximately?
On total amount of contract, the pretender estimate?
Yeah.
Was two point, sorry.
Okay, that's close enough. I mean...
Yeah, it was just over two million dollars, which Pedersen came in under, but not nearly as far under as the other, within our contingency allowance if needed. Although with Pedersen's work, they typically come in on, on budget. They, they know how to price the items. Everything's built on quantities or, of materials and not really labor, so that everything's supplied and placed. We, we lay everything out that they need to bid on it, and length of pipe, volume of rock and whatnot. And Pedersen, in all the categories, really have it down, down very specific on what it takes. They have their own forces for blasting, which is a big plus for them, because that can be something that would, could potentially run over. Although we do rock probe to profile the rock, it could change actually in the field. Having their own forces allows them to react to that very quickly and without delay.
Yeah, I, I see where you're coming from, but at the same time, I, when you look at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a project of two point two million plus, surely to God, the contractor is, is going to make a hundred and twenty thousand in profit, or he wouldn't be in business. That one twenty would be cutting into his profit, so I have, I guess I have to question that he couldn't do it within that price range, but I think the issue is more of our previous experience with that particular contractor. There was some challenges in the past, and although his price is lower, it doesn't warrant going with him, so I, I support the Pedersen contract. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think, just to echo what Counselor Roman said, I, I think with, over the years, we've learned that the, the cheapest is not always the best route to, to take. And that will come back with a, in a bylaw later.
In your package, I also included the construction limits for the job, so it's a continuation from last year from Wood Street North. The black line is where the utilities will follow, the, the water storm sewer, and then the, the green is where the sidewalks on the streets will be proposed. So basically, to continue through the Folger Easement to King, to Comfort, there'll be connection to existing Comfort, and a little further up, King, to Poplar. We will go west on Poplar to connect to, to existing on Wood Street, otherwise a small section of road would be left in limbo for too long. And then the, the plan, and then over east on Poplar, connect to existing for the next phase, which would run from Poplar to Park, to Taylor, and then continue up McCamus-McElvy to the top of that drainage area. And along the way, we will not leave little sections undone through that. And then that allows further development east-west in those streets, and the problem area of McCamus-McElvy that has been a concern will be a couple of years down the road, but it's, we're a lot closer than we were.
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, just one other comment, Mark. I don't know what our policy is, but when we've had a previous unsatisfactory experience with a contractor, and they keep bidding on other contracts as they come, tenders as they come through, would it not be better to cut them off at the pass? And you don't meet our qualifications, thanks for applying, rather than going through the whole process, them thinking that they still have an opportunity? And the reality is, if you have had a bad experience with a contractor, you're certainly not going to call them back.
You are correct in looking at this. We, they hadn't bid on the previous year. There's a couple of ways to do it. Really cutting them off for a period of time is probably not warranted at this point. They are a company that could grow and get better and have, have things done better for the next tender. Should we know that they're willing to, have the intent to bid on it, we, we could go firstly and, and pre-qualify. That way, it gives us the opportunity to look at their references, past history, and see if they've made any improvements, rather than disqualifying them for a set period of time. We can see how they progress through the years, whether they've come to a point where we, we could accept them. So we will pre-qualify if we know they're, well, we should, we'll pre-qualify next time, regardless of who's out there.
Yeah, I just think what's going to happen here with this rejected contractor is that they will file a complaint with the province, you know, stating they were the lowest bid, and that we didn't act properly. I mean, we did have a note, and I think we've done our due diligence, but I guess I'm just try, in future, trying to avoid that if it can be. So just food for thought.
Yeah, for sure.
Mark, on the further reconstruction, there's sidewalks down these streets, right?
Yes, the, the green lines are showing where the sidewalks would go. So they're not on both sides in, in the, on the smaller streets, but we're at least putting them on one side. Within their street, like Wood Street, we would, and getting in closer to the downtown core, where the traffic goes to, we would look at both sides.
Okay. That'll come back as, as a bylaw.
The next topic is the water treatment plant high lift pump replacement. So I'm recommending that we add this to capital into the Water Works reserves. We've had a pump that's failed. The other one twenty-five, we replaced one last year, did the energy audit, a funded audit, and managed to put in a seventy-five horsepower to replace the one twenty-five energy savings, and then also had a rebate from Save On Energy for, at that point, it was fifty percent of that pump cost. That program is still in effect. A seventy-five will, will go in as well. This one had a magnet drive on it, so it was one that would self-regulate to the, the volume and pressures needed in, in the water system, rather than different pumps starting and stopping, that, that causes disruption. For this, rather than a magnet drive, we'd look at a variable speed drive added to that one, so it creates, it will typically do the same thing, and is a bit more energy efficient for this one. So it, it's a little bit more than last year, but we'll see the energy payback over time. Won't take more, I believe around four years, we're estimating, as well as we do qualify for a rebate for this pump. So I've, I've put in the cost to pay for the whole project, and then, because we, we don't know what the rebate will be back yet, but any, any rebate back are, are unspent dollars from this project would be reallocated to the Water Works Reserve. Looking at future, future energy savings down the road, there's two, two hundred horsepower, the bigger high lift pumps in there, a total of four, that would qualify for the Save On Energy grant as well, that we currently looking at to see what the options are and feasibility to change those out, not this year, but coming forward, possibly next year, to keep reducing the energy consumption of the plant.
Counselor Morgan?
As you know, Mark, I'm a big fan of doing this kind of work. The, you're going to, for those two hundred horse pumps, you're going to look at that sooner rather than later, right? As far as the payback on that goes?
Yeah, we're looking at those right now.
Okay. And I don't know if the rest of council's interested, but I'd certainly be interested to see what our energy usage is year over year by replacing these pumps, because I think that's, you know, good to know, because those are, those are dollars in our pocket going forward. I mean, that's, that's big savings if we can save, you know, an amount of money continuously going into the future, rather than just, you know, a, a one-off saving. So I'd certainly be interested whenever you get a minute.
The, the energy audit we did on the, through, was fully funded to do the, the energy audit. So when we replace the pump, we estimate the power savings, we put it in, then they come and they look at the actual power savings, and then they rebate you that amount. So they, we got the full applicable rebate to the first pump that we put in, so.
So does that mean like fifty percent saving on, on electricity on the?
Well, I don't know, it's not fifty percent saving, but we got fifty percent of the cost of the pump, because we met the targets that we were looking for.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Kylie?
Yes, may I ask you, just to refresh council's memory, what was the reserve amount that was set, budgeted for?
I, I don't have the, the capital with me, however, we had, after we paid out our Wood Street portions, and that we still had about seventy-one thousand in there for this year, and we had planned to put an additional one hundred thousand in for this year. So that would be a hundred and seventy-one minus sixty-five, and then we'd put back in whatever rebate we got back.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a resolution here. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie, that council approved the draw- the drawdown of $65,000 from Waterworks reserves to cover the cost of replacing the high lift pump at the water treatment plant. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, so the next report is on Canadian Malartic, their summer 2016 mine rehabilitation work. We worked with Canadian Malartic last year when they, they had done some mine rehabilitation work within town, and again, this year, they've approached us, and we've had a few meetings about it. They do feel as a corporation that they are, they would like to make sure that council's fully aware and the public's fully aware. We, at Physical Services, we are aware, we do the locates for them, we help them as we can, but they want to do their due diligence and make sure the public is fully briefed on their activities. It's really a big health and safety thing to them, because they're mine hazards that are under their, under their, under their business that they have to, through municipal Northern Developmental Mines, to, to deal with in a timely fashion for rehabilitation of those mine hazards. So, what they'd asked is, is if council would support their work in the form of a resolution going forward. It will go out in the press, we can help them by putting it on our website, and again, we'll work with them as far as the locates in the areas they need to go, and any other municipal services that they require from us, that we can provide. The list of their mine rehabilitation work is there, there's also a map in the area. Online, you'll be able to see the color map. Now, there's, the historic backgrounds listed in the report. Basically, as of June 2014, Canadian Malartic acquired and issued all outstanding shares of the Cisco and takes charge of the investigation and rehabilitation work of the Silvenite Mine Hazards. So, they're not, the, there's portions of locating the mine hazards that can be difficult, and then there's the process of going, the feasibility of how to rehabilitate them. So, nothing always goes smooth, so there is, they will be in and around town working as best they can to get these done as quick as possible.
Counselor Morgan.
Yeah, certainly, Canadian Malartic and the people that work for them are very conscientious, and they're doing a great job as far as dealing with all of these things. Mark, I was just wondering, for, you mentioned, this, you know, this is going to be, this is on the website as part of our agenda. Can we get the, the full picture? Because some of the sites are cut off of this picture?
Yeah.
And maybe update the agenda online so that the public has a better idea of just exactly where these, these things are, and that Canadian Malartic is dealing with them all?
Yeah, I didn't realize it was cut off in here, but yes, they will provide exactly what they've sent to me.
Okay.
Okay, I have a resolution here in front of me. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker. In the interest of public safety, council supports the Canadian Malartic 216 summer mine rehabilitation work in Kirkland Lake. As shown in the report presented by the Director of Physical Services, all in favor? Thank you. Municipal recycling program.
As a follow-up to the last meeting on this, I did provide the cost breakdowns as requested by council to further look at these items. So, again, what I'm, what I'm recommending is curbside collection only. Allow me to come up with the, the cheapest way to do it. Municipal are contracted, and look at possibility of bi-weekly or weekly collection, whatever makes the most sense, fee, dollar-wise, and potentially implementation-wise from one to the other, as well as eliminating the town depot. So, basically, a community of our size, we must have a recycling program. Typically, we have two types, we have curbside and a depot, but we're required just to have a recycling program. We would meet that by having curbside collection only. The, for perspective costs, because we have to have one, the type of recycling program, the cost per ton to dispose of waste at the landfill site is approximately $40 per cubic meter, and the cost to recycle, which, you know, being green costs, is about $400 per cubic meter, which is 10, 10 times the, the amount. So, we have to look at that and come up with the best options for this community at the, at the cheapest rate. So, this is, again, what I've recommended and put forward, and if there's any question on the associated cost breakdowns, I can answer that.
Counselor Morgan.
Yeah, I've said it before, and I'm, I'm just going to say it again. I mean, the whole notion of recycling, the way that we do it today is, is a bit wonky. So, really, I think, you know, this, what you're proposing, Mark, is, is, I think, the right approach. But I would like to definitely revisit this whole idea once we get a better handle on the garbage pickup and the volumes and all the rest of it, because at the end of the day, really, I think we need to look at the possibility of going to an absolutely bare-bones recycling, and you just told us why. I mean, $400 a cubic meter to deal with recyclables versus $40 a cubic meter to deal with waste. If, if it was really saving the environment, you know what? We wouldn't even be having this discussion, but it's, the reality is, is that the fact that we have to truck this stuff all over the province and, and deal with it is really getting ridiculous, and, I mean, if I had my druthers, I'd probably eliminate recycling altogether, and I've said that. But unfortunately, right now, in Northern Ontario, we're mandated to have recycling, so the cheaper option with the most flexibility is certainly the way that I want to go, and I want to revisit this in, you know, in a, in a year or two years' time, when we, when we have a better handle on, on what we're collecting at the curb, because really, I mean, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. Thanks.
Through the implementation of, of whatever program that's ultimately decided on, I will do regular updates of how it's going and what volumes we're seeing. As far as the program, if I have the flexibility to make sure it's the lowest cost, I wouldn't do anything more than a, a two-year without full review.
Counselor Kylie.
Yes, Mark, I support your recommendation, option three. And as Counselor Morgan mentioned, I, I think this really is a temporary stopgap. We'll find out further what the province has in mind in, is it Bill 150 or 151?
151.
Which could change the whole picture altogether. So, without going through the capital expense of putting up a recycling depot, which we may not need, I'd still be a bit surprised we wouldn't, but this solves the problem temporarily, and we can adjust along the way. So, I do support option three as well.
Yes, Counselor Barker.
Just before coming to council, I've had a couple of people stop and talk about their cycling program, and they're raising concerns about volume-wise. I said this is a temporary thing until we figure out with Bill 151, what exactly is going to be set in place, so I'm very comfortable supporting this, Mark, given the, the circumstances we're under, and looking forward to a, a strong and viable solution moving forward after. Thank you.
Yeah, at the Phenom Conference, the deputy minister did talk on one, Bill 151, recycling,
and assured that the bill was progressing well, and that the, the cost of recycling will be put on the shoulders of the producers, and have municipalities the ability to, to negotiate once this happens. And, and really, the big saver in this whole thing is, is definitely going to be our, our dump site. We're going to be putting a lot less volume into our, into our dump site, and it's going to add many years onto it, and that's really one of the main criteria for us, is to have long longevity at our, at our dump site, and this certainly does it. I think we need something, as council has said, with a little bit of flexibility, so that when the bill does pass, it'll be into our advantage as well. So, option three is, is definitely the one that we should go in. And you're going to put costs together to show the advantage of municipally-owned and the, as possible contracting out?
Yes, I'll, I'll provide that information to council, and I will pick the cheapest option.
Yeah, or, or the one that makes more sense.
Correct.
Because, you know, it might be down the road, much better if, if we had it ourselves, gives us a lot of control of the recycling, and it may be difficult to find a private investor that's willing to buy a truck that, a compactor, which is no doubt fairly expensive, and just for a two-year contract, so either way, we'll, we can look at it once you've gathered all the facts. Counselor Roman.
Mark, I want to thank you for providing me with those numbers I was after, and I've come around as well to recognizing that curbside is the way to go, at least in the short term. I agree with Counselor Morgan in that recycling itself is a bit of a dog, but we're forced to do so. For that reason, I, I prefer that we at least stick with the curbside every two weeks to begin with, certainly be cheaper. But, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kylie.
One further comment. I talked to Jenna McNaughton earlier today. I think it's important that we get the message out to the public as to the changes in, in both recycling and in garbage as soon as possible. There are some concerns out there, especially from multi-res owners, so either a press release or something on the website advising what these changes are going to be, and also the education aspect of it will be ongoing. I understand that'll take a little time to get off the ground, but getting the message out to the public, I think, is important. There's, there's a little confusion or wondering what we're actually doing.
Because both garbage and recycling are working together quite closely, we haven't put really anything out yet, although we, we've passed the garbage proposal. Now that we can make this work together and people can see why it works, we'll be getting something out very soon, as well as press release. There's a couple of little things to, you know, just to finalize on, and we'll, we'll get something out. I did want to mention, and I almost forgot, that we did have a booth at the Holman Trade Show. Jenna McNaughton did staff it for the weekend with the help of one of our students. So, what she reported was that there was a lot of people dropping by that could actually see the container, so she did indicate that people are, you know, they know what's, they, they see what's going to happen, they, they've heard it on the radio and the paper, and it's, was typically well-received by everybody that was there. It did come up that more of the, maybe senior population, whatnot, would prefer the smaller of the carts than the large carts, so we will make accommodations to allow that flexibility. She'd asked several questions, you know, do people, what do you use, curbside depot only, but there's only a few that really said they only use depot, and again, just having it at home with the collection, I don't think we're going to deal with a lot of other issues of accessibility for older people as well. There were people that asked to be on the committee that we're, we've put out for and asking for names, so she's got several people that have applied for that as well, as well as the rain barrels and composters were also another thing that we were promoting and that people had interest in as well, environmental. So, overall, she believes it was well-received at that point, so that was kind of a first public event for it, so went, went well.
Yep.
And thank you, and you could thank Jenna, the, I seen her at the, at the Holman Trade, and she was very enthusiastic and willing to answer all the questions, and, and that's really the start of the education process, isn't it?
Yes.
So, thank you for that. I do have a resolution. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie, that council approves option three of the recycling memo dated May 3, 2016, as presented by the Director of Physical Services, all in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Okay, we have the reading of some, of the bylaws. Bylaw, it was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 16-038 being a bylaw to adopt tax-capping option tools for 2016, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, this is a bylaw to, to authorize mayor and clerk to do a contract with Pedersen. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie, that bylaw 16-040 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a contract with Pedersen Construction for a reconstruction of Folger, Folger easement, King, Comfort, and Poplar Streets, to be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. This is a bylaw with regards to the contract for the concession at the Joe Mavernak. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 16-041 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Holly James for the concession services at the Joe Mavernak Community Complex, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. And just as, as a note to that, Polly and Don Strong had operating, have operated that concession for 47 years, so certainly on behalf of Town Council, we want to thank them for, for that very much dedicated service to our, to our users. Notices of motion? None. Confirmation bylaw was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie, that bylaw 16-042 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held May 17, 2016, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Thank you. Counselors' reports. Counselor Kylie.
So, without stealing any thunder from you, Mayor Tony, I'd like to congratulate the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners for the putting on the Dudley Hewitt Cup. The attendance was fairly, fairly well. It was definitely a good time for Kirkland Lake to showcase their community, and people that showed up, I, I think from Trenton and the other, the other communities certainly saw that the Kirkland Lake people were happy to see them and appreciated the support. I think we should congratulate Kirkland Lake Gold Miners management, and, but especially all the volunteers. They're very, very professional, they did a great job, and it, it sure did a lot for community spirit, so congratulations to everybody, and thanks for their efforts.
Yep, certainly, and I, I would echo that as well, Counselor Kylie, that, you know, the, the organizing committee that put this together, the army of volunteers that did it, and, and especially a community, the community really embraced this cup, and right from our, our retails to, to right from our, our retails to, to right through the whole community. And I, I, I think that gives really a good support to the strategy that we're taking with our official plan with the sports tourism strategy. And it shows that we're certainly capable of hosting an event of this size and kudos out to all of them. We also attended, attended the McHappy Days at Ronald McDonald's, at McDonald's in support of, of the Ronald McDonald House. So I was very pleased to do that on behalf of the town. I attended at ESJV, Santa Sante, hosted a Keep Active in Kirkland Lake. So I was happy to do that on behalf of the town as well. I visited with the Red Hat Society at their luncheon at the pagoda and, and welcomed many visitors to our community. I attended the Northern College graduation and on behalf of the town, I congratulated all the graduates and it's certainly something that they should be very proud of. Went to the Phenom Conference. It was about 250 delegates. Very impressive. For me, it was much more, a, a much better place to, to connect with other municipalities. For me, I found it much better than the AMO. The AMO were like a little polywog in a, in a big lake. But the Phenom, I, I thought the ability to connect with other municipal leaders was there. Also attended while I was in Timmins, I was asked to attend the Mine Rescue banquet and present a life-saving award to a Kirkland Lake resident, Stacy Fay. I will forward each of you, I, I had a copy, electronic copy of what she did and it's certainly something we can all be proud of. So I was very pleased to be that. And also attended the kickoff, the kickoff celebration or event for Nurses Week. We all know the importance of nurses and I was very pleased to attend that at the Legion on behalf of the town as well. Additional information, the Ontario Energy Board noticed the customers of Union Gas, that's leaving the packages for everyone to read. And we have the adjournment. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker, that council adjourn its regular meeting of May 17, 2016, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one personnel and six property issues. All in favor? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.